I'd like to call September 19th, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And the first order of business is invocation by our county manager, Sharon Griffin.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Bright, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, be with the Commissioners tonight in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on tonight's agenda. Father, we pray for our military and our first responders who continue to serve our county and our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect for the reverent and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
If you all stand, assurance Slater will lead us into pledge. Assistant County Manager?
Thank you.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to acknowledge elected officials. Sheriff Miller, thank you for being here. Amiga Jarman, register deeds. Thank you for being here. And Colonel Thomas, Sheriff's Office. Thank you all for attending tonight. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for Commissioners' comment period on the agenda, which is at the end of the meeting. With no other items to consider, could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Have a motion. A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any member would like to have removed and discussed later at the end of the meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're already at item number three, public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a citizen signed up to speak during the public comment period. I would remind the public and all of our citizens, speakers will be invited to come to the podium in the order in which they have signed up. You have exactly five minutes in which to speak. There is no dialogue with the audience, and we do ask that you address your comments to the Board as a whole and to retain professional language and decorum. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Walter Rodriguez of 103 Shoreham Drive.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, today I stand before you, and a lot of people, as I've walked in, did not recognize me. The majority of the time that you guys would see me is in a regular suit in court. But today, the purpose of today coming in to speak with you guys is to let you know about an organization that has been in this area for quite some time. Now, the normal uniforms that each of you have seen in this county is a United States Marine Corps uniform. And having been a former Marine, a number of deployments to combat zones, the Marine Corps holds a special place in my heart. However, for the past 26 years, I have been a volunteer for Civil Air Patrol. Now, for those of you who have not heard of Civil Air Patrol, that is probably one of America's best-kept secrets. And our journey, starting with tonight, is to make sure that we end that. Give you a little bit of information about Civil Air Patrol. Civil Air Patrol started around World War II, when we had civilians hop in yellow aircraft, armed to the teeth, with depth charges. And they would patrol the coasts of our country, making sure that German submarines were stopped with those depth charges. Now, Congress at a certain point in time decided that untrained civilians with arms and bombs was not a good idea. So they gave them a new purpose, three missions as an auxiliary of the United States Air Force. Cadet programs being our first mission. Cadets, attention. We have cadets from age 12 all the way to age 18. The oldest here is 16. This is a program that allows these cadets to learn leadership, aerospace, and emergency services, disaster relief. They learn character development and moral leadership. As you can see, ranging from 12 years old to 16 in front of you, these are some of our cadets from our county. I'd like to introduce you to Captain Sweat, my deputy commander for cadets. He is the one that runs the cadet program. Now, before you, what you see is only a portion of individuals from our unit, the Cunningham Composite Squadron. My last senior member here is Lieutenant Elliott, holding multiple hats as logistics, supply, and our public affairs officer at this point in time. My name is Major Walter Rodriguez. I am the squadron commander of Cunningham Field. Please take your seats. So cadet programs is one of our first missions. Second mission, aerospace science. Aerospace education is crucially important with our organization, and we try to partner with the local schools, giving them an opportunity to become aerospace education members. In addition to that, we have emergency services, and I'd like to kind of get each of you to remember Hurricane Matthew, when it came through and almost made our county an island. At that point in time, it took a lot of effort to reach out, to try and get ahold of someone from the county, to let each of you know we were still here. Our highway patrol in this county was utilizing our aircraft, our Civil Air Patrol aircraft under Air Force Mission numbers, to relay communications. In addition to that, we had set up points of distribution for water and food supplies. And again, Hurricane Florence, we were in the same situation, providing support. As you know, we have additional hurricanes coming in. Hopefully, they're going to be diverted. But one thing I did not want was for another year to pass without each of the Commissioners knowing that the resource is available. Through our cadets, through our senior members, who are highly trained unpaid professionals, they fall all within the incident command. That structure has been set up with Civil Air Patrol for quite some time. And I felt it was important to come in for and in front of you to let you know that not only are we here, but we are providing an excellent program to raise cadets and children within our community in leadership, character development, moral leadership, and the STEM program. So Commissioners, at any point in time in the future, when we run into disaster scenarios, need for community emergency response, aerial photography, assessing damage, I would hope that this opportunity to speak in front of you is remembered, that you reach out to the state, and you have Civil Air Patrol respond in kind to the disasters that we need help with in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. We always need to have all the volunteers that we can when we have a disaster, and I thank you for letting us know about your organization tonight. Have anybody else?
That's all, Chairman. That concludes our public comment period for this evening.
Okay, we'll move on to item six, which is public hearings, and I'll turn that back over to Manager Griffin to lead us through that.
Thank you, Chairman Bright and Commissioners. Tonight, we have two public hearings. Our first is PREZ 2022-00012, public hearing on Harris rezoning. And I'll turn it over to Jessica Rue for the staff introduction and recommendation.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Our first rezoning request this evening is a request to go from R5 residential zoning to highway business zoning. This was requested by Robert Harris on behalf of 917 Old Folkestone Road LLC. The request is for three parcels totaling 16.77 acres to be rezoned on the north side of Old Folkestone Road. Currently, these three parcels are undeveloped. They have access to Anwassa Water and Pluris wastewater. They are in Turkey Creek's fire district, and our most recent traffic counts have this portion of the road under capacity. The three hatched areas are the requested rezonings. You can see right now, it is adjacent to R5, also R8M, which is medium-density residential, and then also a large portion of highway business. So we would look at this as an expansion of a commercial corridor. R5 zoning is our most dense zoning district. It allows single-family homes on 5,000 square-foot lots up to apartment buildings at 20 units per acre. Highway business also allows 20 units per acre commercial, we would consider it commercial because it's commercial building, apartment buildings, but also your more traditional commercial uses. Our comprehensive plan has this area in three different categories. The Sneed's Ferry Community Plan has this as traditional neighborhood, which would support this rezoning. This is our future land use map here. Staff and the planning board found this to be reasonable and in the public interest because it is adjacent to already highway business-owned properties and supported by six different policies in the future land use plan. This is coming to you recommended unanimously from the planning board. They made this recommendation on September 1st at their planning board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rue. At this time, I will open the public hearing. No one has signed up for this public hearing. I will ask if the applicant would like to come forward if present.
Hello, my name is Robert Harris, also 917 Old Folkestone Road LLC. Thank you very much for your time this evening. My home address is 13 North Point Drive, Colts Neck, New Jersey, as well as 9 Osprey Drive in North Topsail Beach for 13 years. I would ask if you have any questions for me. I can try my best to answer them.
Thank you, sir. And if you'd like to sit down, and they can ask questions in just a moment, if you want to sit beside Ms. Rue on the front row. I'll make one call to the audience. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during public hearing? Seeing none, I will now close this public hearing for PREZ 2022-00012. And at this time, it is available for Commissioner discussion and consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions for the applicant or Ms. Rue? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item.
Yes, our next public hearing is PREZ 2022-00013, and I will turn it over again to Ms. Rue.
Thank you again. This rezoning request is to go from community business to highway business, submitted by Gray Outdoor LLC on behalf of the owners, JFA Rentals LLC. This is for one parcel of 2.76 acres, kind of at that intersection, that tricky triangle intersection of 172 Sneed's Ferry Road and North Sneed's Ferry Road. This property is actually developed already, commercial, so this would actually increase some conformity if we were to adopt this rezoning request. It is served by Anwassa Water and Pluris wastewater. Again, we are in the Turkey Creek Fire District. The traffic counts on 172 were actually taken about two miles down the road. Those are overcapacity, but there is a funded project working on that. And then traffic counts on Sneed's Ferry Road are below capacity at the last count. Here's our rezoning. It is adjacent across the street from highway business zoning, which is what is requested. There is also R8 and R8M and more community business in this area. Community business serves your smaller businesses, whereas highway businesses does cater to larger, more regional business uses. Our comprehensive plan has this entire area in medium-density residential. However, this was found to be reasonable and in the public interest because it is adjacent to so much property already zoned highway business. This is an image of that map. This rezoning is also coming to you recommended unanimously from the planning board at their September 1st meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rue. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and we have one speaker, Mr. Guy Williamson of 118 Jones Street in Cedar Point, if you would like to approach and speak at the podium.
Good evening. I'm Guy Williamson, 118 Jones Street, Cedar Point. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer for you. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much, sir. You can take a seat on the first row. I'll make one call to the audience. If anyone would like to come speak regarding specifically the Harris rezoning, if you would approach the podium at this time. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing, and it is available for Commissioner discussion and consideration.
Motion to approve. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So the core difference between highway business and community business is density and just more of a regional, you said a regional business approach rather than a community business approach?
Yes. Community business, if you were to look at the chart, allows smaller businesses than highway business. A very key difference between the two zoning districts. One, community business allows 10 units per acre if you were looking at multifamily development, and highway business would allow 20 units per acre. But the key difference, I think, in this area here is that outdoor advertising is allowed in highway business where it is not allowed in community business.
Any further? Any further questions for applicant or Ms. Rue? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none unanimously approved. Item five, general item, surplus land, new land offer. Christina Russell.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The county received an offer from a citizen in the amount of $5,108.44 to purchase surplus property located at East Drive, parcel 031209, and this is approximately .24 acres in size. The statute allows the county to sell property that no longer serves a public purpose and is uneconomical or inefficient. The county's standard policy states that we sell surplus property using the negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process. This process allows other interested parties to submit upset offers on the property when it's been advertised for a 10-day period. If no upset bids receive within the 10-day period, the property will be sold to the citizen. And if the county receives any upset bids, the high offer will be brought back to the Board for consideration. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve resolution number 22-017, which authorizes the Purchasing Division head to conduct the sale of the property using the negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process, and to authorize the Chairman to sign the resolution on behalf of the county.
Motion approved. Hearing second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onslow County Health Department bad debt write-off. Ms. Hoover, Christine Hoover, our Health Department Director. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Tonight, the item that I'm bringing to you is the Health Department is required each year to bring you a proposed write-off of bad debts. Our billing department works very hard to collect from our clients. Bad debts are amounts that have had no activity on the account for 24 months and have had billing attempts or have had attempts to receive payment on those debts. We do use the debt set-off clearinghouse, but those pathways require us to have a $50 minimum. So all of the amounts that I'm bringing to you tonight are below that threshold. The amounts range from 96 cents to $46.93. And this amount of $281.74 represents 1/100 of 1% of what the Health Department collected in fiscal year '22. Overall, we collected $2,188,089. And tonight, we are respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve the Health Department's bad debt write-off in the amount of $281.74. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just congratulations on your efforts. That's a very small, small number compared to the amount that you've collected over the years. So congratulations to your department there on that.
Any further? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Jones County DSS Legal Service Contract. Ms. Sanders. Social Services Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. The item you have before you this evening is a request for a contract with Jones County Department of Social Services for one specific child welfare case, which is considered a conflict of interest for Jones County. If approved, this will be the third year that we have entered into this contract with Jones County. So it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the proposed contract with Jones County Department of Social Services and authorize the Chairman in the county to sign on behalf of the county and Onslow County Consolidated Human Services.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Thank you.
Appointment to the State Public Libraries. Ms. Jennifer Whaley will present that item to us. Good evening, Ms. Whaley.
Good evening. Chairman Bright, Vice Chairman Foster, members of the Board. The State Library of North Carolina administers a state aid to public libraries fund. The amount of funding is determined during the budget cycle for the state of North Carolina, and legislation stipulates that the appropriation for state aid to public libraries is intended to promote, aid, and equalize public library service in North Carolina. Available funds are distributed to public library systems across the state based on the following formula: 50% as block grants and 50% as per capita income equalization grants. In order to receive state aid to public libraries funding, all public library systems are required to file an annual application with the State Library of North Carolina requesting the funding. Based on current information, it is anticipated the Onslow County Public Library will meet eligibility requirements to receive this funding. The estimated state aid for Onslow County for fiscal year '22-23 is $233,953. It is respectfully requested that Commissioners consider accepting the state aid to public libraries application as presented, and if approved, authorize the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners and the County Manager to sign the documents on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stream Flow Rehabilitation Program Ordinance. Ms. Lisa Martin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners accepted a grant for the Stream Flow Rehabilitation Program on September 7. As you'll recall, the Stream Flow Rehabilitation Program assists in protecting and restoring the integrity of drainage infrastructure. This state grant will be utilized to clear an estimated length of 37,733 feet of back swamp. The total project budget will be $377,335. We respectfully request approval of the project ordinance for the Stream Flow Rehabilitation Program and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Budget amendments, that'll be, Lisa, that's yours too.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to present four budget amendments for your consideration this evening. Item B16 is an increase in state funding for the ELC School Liaison. Item B17 is an increase in state funding for Social Services Immunization Action Plan. Item B18 is to utilize special adoption promotion funds. And item B19 is a slight increase in grant allocation for senior services. We respectfully request that you approve these budget amendments. And if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onslow Civic Affairs Committee appointments, I think that'd be yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The Onslow Civic Affairs Committee has two appointments outstanding this evening. Mr. Richard Walker in the Seat Two category's term has expired. Mr. Walker has expressed an interest in continuing his service and has completed a citizen participation application for consideration. Ms. Andrea Davis in Seat Three category has a term that expires on September 30, 2022, and she does not wish to be reappointed. Ms. Noreen Rosetti and Bishop Vernon Zinnerman, Sr., have both expressed an interest in this seat and have submitted citizen participation applications for consideration. For the second seat, Seat Number Three, a ballot has been provided for your convenience. All of the applications referenced are on file and have been certified for the Clerk's We will look to the ballots to determine Seat Number Three, but for Seat Two, we do respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider the appointment of Mr. Richard Walker for the Seat Two category for a two-year term expiring September 30, 2024.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Zinnerman, who is in the audience, I believe. Our next appointment is for the Jacksonville Onslow Sports Commission. The Secretary to the Jacksonville Onslow Sports Commission, Board of Directors, did provide a letter to staff and has requested that the Board of Commissioners consider appointments. Mr. Mike Choice for Seat L has recently resigned from the Sports Commission. The Jacksonville Onslow Sports Commission has requested that Ms. Alice Armstrong be appointed to fill that current vacancy of Seat L. Ms. Armstrong has submitted a citizen participation application and has expressed interest in serving on the Board. The application is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office. At this time, I do respectfully request that you consider appointment of Ms. Alice Armstrong to Seat L for the remaining three-year term to expire June 30, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Item Seven is a consent agenda. We didn't move anything from the consent agenda to item seven, so now we're at item number eight, which is managers' comments. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I just have a couple of things. The Public Safety Memorial Ceremony this year has been tentatively set by the Planning Committee for Thursday, October 20, at 3:00 p.m. We did move it to later in the day this year from morning. from morning so that more of our volunteer fire department participants can be in attendance. Other than that, fortunately, I don't really have anything. It appears that Hurricane Fiona is going to turn north. I would warn citizens who might be watching, who are swimmers, that we do expect to have a lot of surf and rip current impacts when it comes by, and to please take great care when swimming and in the water around Onslow County, and make sure to obey all warning signs. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll start with Commissioner comments. I'll start on this side with Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe when we complete this Streamflow Grant project, we will have cleared about 100,000 feet of streams in Onslow County in about the last year or so. I appreciate the staff working on that. That's a good thing for Onslow County. Able to attend a lot of ceremonies lately, the MIA POW MIA recognition by Golden, by Rolling Thunder was exceptionally nice, and the MCI Easter Reception, Patriot Day that Civic Affairs put on, and the 9/11 memorial service that Town Swansboro and a lot of different agencies did. So it's been a busy couple of weeks, and we appreciate you all being here tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Buchanan?
I don't have nothing to say. I just want to thank everybody for being here.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Scott?
Okay, the only thing I want to bring up, and our county manager's been talking about this a lot. At North Topsel, we have a ship, a little boat that's out in the water. It's very dangerous out there. We've already lost a human life. I'm asking you and the Commissioners, and I know they'll agree with me 100%. That is nothing to go out to. That tide changes quick. The current in there is dangerous. So please stay, now just stay off of it, and God bless you, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Price?
Thank the Civic Affairs Committee for planning the Patriots' Day 9/11 Remembrance. It was a very moving ceremony there at Beirut Memorial Gardens, and so I appreciate their work on that. And other than that, have a nice evening.
Commissioner Knapp?
I wish Major Rodriguez was still here. I got excited when I saw those blue uniforms come in here. Being a former Air Force officer, I kind of had a flashback, and I'm proud of what he's doing with the Civil Air Patrol. I was a member of Civil Air Patrol when I was about 13, 14, and kind of set my, set my goals as far as the Air Force is concerned. And actually, I eventually went into active duty after college, so I appreciate him taking the reins on that. One thing you mentioned about Hurricane Fiona, you know, I've heard the rumors that storms named with, start with the letter Fs, are horrible. Hopefully, this one will be horrible out to sea, and it'll continue to move on its course and leave us alone. But that brings an interesting point. You know, we talk so much about the beaches and swimming and stuff like that. You know, when you go out there, use your common sense. You know, with a weatherman or somebody says there are rip currents out there, guess what? There are rip currents out there. And, you know, I don't care how great a swimmer you might think you are, rip currents can take you out to sea, and then before you know it, you're tired, you can drown, et cetera. You got to be careful. And I'm not trying to make a mockery of it, but when there are signs out there that says "do not swim," okay, "dangerous area," that's exactly what it means. Do not swim in this particular area. And Commissioner Scott mentioned one about the current coming in. Just be careful out there because we don't want to lose another life out there carelessly from somebody not being able to read or follow instructions. And the Public Safety Memorial is October 20. Please, if you can, attend that. I know there are several of us here that have friends that are on that wall that died in the line of duty. There's three of us here, four of us that served in law enforcement, five of us actually, served in law enforcement from one capacity to another, and some of us are retired. And so we do have some people on that wall, and take the time to remember them, but not only them, their families and their children, because they still are family. They're still brothers in blue, sisters in blue, public responders or whatever. You know, they put their life on the line and paid the ultimate price. And the last thing I'm going to say, just so I can keep egging on some of the people in here, especially you, Counselor, is that my Florida State Seminoles are 3-0, and I am counting the days now when I go with you to NC State to watch the Seminoles beat your North Carolina Wolf Pack. So go Knolls. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Foster?
I appreciate Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Price mentioning a couple of the events that took place. People of Onslow County, go out to Lejeune Gardens, Beirut Memorial, Vietnam Memorial, the 9/11 Memorial, just right on down the line. Montford Point is, there's a lot of history and things that need to be remembered. Take a moment to go out there and visit that. We often see it written, "never forget." Unfortunately, I think often we forget, and we need to go out there, especially in Onslow County, of lives that have been lost in the defense of this nation and those that want to bring down that beacon on the hill. Thanks for coming out tonight. Congratulations, Bishop. Thanks for being a part of Onslow County.
Thank you. I think we ought to maybe make contact with Walter Rodriguez with the Civil Air Patrol and see how we can incorporate the volunteers to help us if we do have a hurricane or any disaster event, maybe with aerial photos and whatever they do. So thank you.
We did receive, we did receive quotes from them during Hurricane Florence for assistance. So we did, we did have communication with them, but we can certainly continue that. When, when that kind of thing happens in this area, we have to look to all the resources that are available, depending on what's going on.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad that the low pressure, that's a hurricane now, is moving away from us, but we always still need to be on guard with that. Onslow County, during Hurricane Florence, we had right at, I don't know exactly the number, right at $11 million of cleanup, that we had to spend that money first. We don't, we don't get the money from FEMA. We have to spend it, and then we apply for it. We still got some time. We still, what, four years away, and we still hadn't got all of our reimbursement.
We still are lacking one project, so we're lacking about $160,000 right now from FEMA from Hurricane Florence.
So that's why we have to keep that fund balance healthy, is because we have to put that money up first.
That's right.
And you never know what a hurricane or tornado can do that we have to spend that money for and then wait to get reimbursed for them. But we have that money. We've worked really hard, the managers worked really hard to build a fund balance to maintain that. So a lot of people will say, well, you've got money stashed away. Well, we've got money put away, but when you're talking about being on the coast and with a hurricane, it can be really devastating. Congratulations, Bishop Zinnerman, for your appointment to Civic Affairs. I think you would be an asset over there. And I appreciate the other person that put their name on the application also. If we had two slots, I surely would vote for them too, because everybody's, you know, willing to contribute and work with that. Last year about this time, the board, we, we gave an appreciation certificate to a lady named Blatch Mallard. She was 101. I went out there and delivered it to her, and she was really in good health when I went, but she passed away this weekend. So keep her family in, in your prayers and thoughts. Other than that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Are you a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for being here.